Yeah, it's Mini Glitter City, mini boom. It's like, okay.
It's like an allergic reaction.
Huh?
It's like an allergic reaction.
I think you're wrong. I don't want people cluttering my emails.
I mean, you can vote there, just don't get in the water.
I'll be there tomorrow night all the way back and know what they say.
Yeah.
You wanted to give them a message.
It's our favorite. We go there every summer. So nice out there.
Do they have a lot of home town or?
Oh, it's.
There is campground.
But it's mainly a town.
Yeah.
Is there a trail? Can you ride a bike around it there?
Not really.
I know that there is.
There's a driveway, but.
Oh, there is two trail.
Or.
Yes, I saw people walking it when we were on the. Oh, yeah.
On the inside of the house, I mean.
It's on the outside of the house.
Yeah, like where the drive is, yeah.
Yeah. Tailor bar was one. Oh, is that the John?
Good evening. I'll call the June second, twenty twenty five Webster City Council meeting to order. Anybody rule call?
Abby Hansen here, John Hawkins, Megan McFarland here, Matt McKinney.
Here.
Logan Welch.
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Item one is petitions, communications, and requests. Oh, we need, sorry, thank you. First of all, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have one?
No. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, now we'll move on to item one. Petitions, communications, and requests. This is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. Please no more than five minutes per person. Except in cases of emergency, the city council will not take any action on this at this meeting, but may ask the city staff to research the matter or have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Any public information? Do you want to remind everybody about the citywide cleanup event coming up June thirteenth from twelve to four P M? And June fourteenth, eight A M to twelve P M? And that's at the middle school parking lot, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
The same place it's been the last six, seven years. Okay, moving on. Number two, consent agenda. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item A is minutes of May, excuse me, May nineteenth, twenty twenty five minute meeting. Item B is claims and the fund list. Item C is a recommend recommend approval for issuance of beer and liquor license by the Iowa Department of Commerce for the following. Special Class C retail alcohol license, T T M M Promotions LLC, the Hamilton County Speedway for participation at Chamber of Commerce Market Nights in June, July, and August of twenty twenty five. And a renewal of Class C retail alcohol license for Leon's Pizza, six forty three Second Street.
Move to approve collectively.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to item three, a general agenda. Item A is a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on proposal to enter into a general obligation corporate purpose loan agreement and to borrow money thereafter. John, do you have?
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Wolfgram is here to present on this item as can share.
Well, it's a good evening. So I wasn't going to get a real industrious because we're setting the hearings, but as we discussed at several different council meetings, we wish to bond to for the Fair Meadow Two project, street sweeper and the snowplow that Brandon brought, I think, a couple of weeks ago. So the yearly P and I payments are to come from lost and road use is our plan at this time. So it would not affect the debt levy nor property taxes in our immediate forecast. Once we have a bond drop off, we will probably pick it up then, but it would even itself, you know, we're not going to raise the debt service for these payments.
So if you scroll down, Zach, you can see in the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six proposed budget, there's a debt service fund summary. This was included in it upon review and approval by the city council. If it is, is, did it make it into the packet? Sorry, keep going. Yeah, right here, if you can't rotate it. Okay. Um. So you can see the debt service fund is funded by interest, property tax reimbursement from Fuller Hall for the pool project that was completed several years ago. And then a series of transfers in for Fair Meadow One, you can see for the upcoming proposed budget, one hundred and forty thousand for Fair Meadow One, sixty thousand the next year for Fair Meadow One, eighty thousand the year after, and then it drops off. Sales tax in for Fair Meadow Two, two hundred and twenty five thousand for three years. And then what we estimate for Wilson Estates in twenty twenty six or twenty twenty seven of one hundred and twenty thousand. You'll note that the road use fund is also transferring fifty thousand. That is a historic transfer, not only for the really street sweeper or the snowplow, it is associated with debt that was issued when the new building was constructed or a portion of that debt that the road use tax fund is funding. Now you can see that in twenty twenty eight and twenty twenty nine, there is a large issue that rolls off of approximately three hundred thousand dollars or it's about five hundred this year. The last payment in a few years will be three hundred. And then that twenty twenty one A, I believe, is done in twenty twenty nine and twenty twenty thirty. That opens up a discussion that the council will have during those budget seasons on whether or not they want to add another Fair Meadow project on or if they want to absorb the Fair Meadow Two debt service and the Wilson Estates debt service with with what's rolling off. So you had some opportunity in the window here for capital planning, which is good, but we need to subsidize with sales tax transfers in the immediate years to fund these two road projects that we've taken on.
Oh, very good. And we're just setting the meeting, right? June sixteenth at six oh five P M. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item B. This is a resolution charging off from active accounts receivable delinquent final utility bills and department charges.
So this is just annual asking that I ask council for counting procedure so that we can write off what looks to be bad debt that we're not going to collect on so that we really can have a true picture of what our financial state is, that it is probably not going to be received. So this year, the total is thirty five thousand for eighteen thirty eight, of which the majority is utility. And just because we write it off does not mean we cannot collect on it, but it's just saying that it's doubtful that that we will. So it's removed from the books. But if somebody would leave us with this, come back to put utilities in their name, they do have to pay this bad debt prior to getting utilities put back in their name. And we do use the set off program. So we'll talk about the setup program in a little bit for the other side, but for utilities right now, we do use that. It used to be called the income offset. So that's how we get payments. We do not we don't use the the small claims avenue. That's how the, that's what we use to try to collect on those bad debts. So you know, we the, we've been fortunate to have the to the offset program that we have collected one hundred and eighty eight thousand. Had we not had that program, I didn't, I didn't get the updated number on like when would people put utilities in their name. But that happens quite a bit too, so.
Very good. And yes, this is an annual thing.
It's just an annual counting procedure, pretty much, yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. On to item C. This is the first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Webster City, Iowa, two thousand nineteen by amending section one eighteen of chapter fifty pertaining to solar energy systems within the corporate limits of the city of Webster City, Iowa. Zach? You have some on this or did you help draft this?
Yeah, just the so working with D G R and the city, the city's engineering on this project or for the city's utilities, D G R. And they were asking the city to adopt various rules, policies as it relates to solar energy in order to so right now, if somebody installs solar, we have some industries that have already had it. If they're installing solar within the city, they enter into an interconnection agreement with the city. All those you see from the highlighted portion as part of entering into the interconnection agreement, they're also agreeing to abide via the they call it the interconnection standards for parallel installation and operation of customer owned distribution general facilities. So all that is is it's the rules that the city's outlining. We have the same thing for water or sewer or any other utility. We have rules and regulations that allows the city to adopt and change those and the utility to change those without having to go when it actually changed the ordinance every time.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about this, like, this is really just kind of like like under underlining and bolding, you gotta follow our rules, right?
You got it.
And you leave it vague so you can change in the future because again, I deal a lot of interconnections agreement, interconnection agreements in my personal or personal business, you know, and this is very common wordage because of the changes in policy. But I was just curious what kind of prompted this to happen. It was DG.
Well, I think there's some, Zach is correct. D G R recommended that we take this matter up, I think. And you're very much more knowledgeable about the market here with solar and solar installations, given the the business experience you have in it. I believe that there's recommendation to you know, review the standards and have us update them is in anticipation of the effects installation of more solar panels may have on our rate collection. And so setting forward these standards, I'm presuming some type of a demand charge perhaps. I don't know. We haven't discussed them yet, but is is forthcoming with the with the standards.
Very good. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
By the way, if I don't say anything, it's a yes. All right, item D. This is the first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city Webster City, Iowa, two thousand nineteen by amending article two, division two, section twenty two dash sixty six entitled discharge in city restricted, quote unquote fireworks.
Good evening, everybody. Just wanted to touch base with you on a couple of things here with fireworks as we're getting ready to have that season. The governor, I think it was in May, signed a new bill making all communities unable to stop fireworks from being shot off on July third, fourth, and December thirty first now. So they've added July third and thirty first to the to the amount of days that you cannot say that they can't be shot off in your in your town.
No, December.
So it's July third, fourth, and December thirty first. So the first part of this is just a request to change and update our ordinance as we're getting close to July fourth to make sure that that's clear everywhere for everything. And I don't know if we have any questions on that.
Just one thing I noted in the ordinance, the way it's written, it appears that you could shoot fireworks off at four A M. The way that's worded, nine A M. July third until eleven P M. On July fourth.
Good catch.
I, you're you're correct. I get what you're saying. Yeah. That'll, that'll be fixed before the second reading.
I just want that noted.
Yeah.
Only people would be very happy about four o'clock.
Eleven P M. On July third and nine A M. Until eleven P M. On July fourth.
That's good catch.
Yeah, I did. I'm still confused on that.
Actually, it's it's ten P M. On the third, eleven on the fourth, twelve thirty on
Yeah. So I put, yeah, and I put eleven P M. Only because I for the sake of the P D. I thought if they have to do the ten o'clock on the third and eleven on the fourth.
And if you're going to allow it, it's still just getting dark around.
Yeah, and so the nine A M. Until eleven P M. On the fourth is the is the state code, the change now. And nine A M. Until twelve thirty A M. On January first is also the change. So that's why before it was ninety until ten P M. On the third, you guys are probably going to tell me that you want it till eleven because, like I said, if you do it on the third at ten, ends at ten and then the fourth that ends at eleven, you're going to get. Yeah.
Yeah.
Eleven makes sense on both times.
Yeah.
So that's the.
No, no, I just could say like, you know, the state Canada has been, you know, leading this whole thing for years, you know, I, I think we've talked about this matter. At least reviewed the ordinance more than any other ordinance that I can think of. I guess we've changed it back more several times.
True.
But again, it's for a good reason. I mean, there's been valid complaints, there's been valid, you know, you know, support on opening it wide up, you know, so I mean, I, I get both sides, but it's just, it's just interesting how the state's still kind of messing with it and then we got to raise justice up, but it opens back up for us to make our own tweaks, which I think you have a a unique one to add, right?
Yes, sir. So with that being the case, looking at this particular year, the fourth is on a Friday, the fifth is on a Saturday. Had some conversation with Eric McKinley, acting police chief. I said, what would that look like for you guys? If we were to allow it on the fifth? So because we all know they're going to get shot anyways on the fifth, more than likely, even if it's not allowed. And he said, oh, it would make a life a lot easier for our guys. And I know the the state talks a lot about weekends before and during or after being allowable in its in its wording and verbiage. So my proposal would be that we would include July fifth as an allowable date to explode fireworks from nine to eleven, when it falls on a Friday or a Saturday during that calendar year.
I have, I guess I have no concerns about that.
So that'll I talked to Chuck, that'll show up on the next. Because one of the, one of the suggestions was just you guys don't wait, you you wave enforcement this year, but I think we're going to make it, we'll make it a change in the ordinance. It says exactly that, that if the fifth files on a Friday or Saturday that of that particular year, then it's allowable for just if the fifth falls on a Thursday, then it's not going to be allowable.
Yeah.
Cool. So this year it's good to go because. Yeah, I don't see any issues with it either. I mean, I, I don't want to be insensitive to the those that do, you know, have you know, pets or or personal, you know, you know, reactions to it. So we'll be conscious of that, but I think the state's kind of done that for us. They've given us parameters to to live within and ordinance around. So yeah, I think it's a great idea and yeah. With that, I'll guess I'll ask for a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Again.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item E. Now, this is the first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of City Iowa, two thousand nineteen by adding a new article pertaining to debt subject to the set off program.
Logan. So the the program, the Iowa offset program was ran by the Department of Administrative Services. And it moved to the Department of Revenue in November. And the call renamed at the set off. So in order to participate, we have to have an ordinance stating the different types of charges that we have that might be considered that we might not collect on and want to submit. So this ordinance is complying with that so that we can use this for such things as a frozen water meter, hazmat cleanups, nuisance mullings or or some of the department charges that that we do have. So I'm just asking that we that you approve this ordinance so that we can use that the offset program when we can. We also have to have a social security number. So oftentimes on some of those charges, we do not, if it's an accident in town, we probably wouldn't have that. But like if it was a frozen meter, we would because it would, we'd already have the utility account, so.
Oh, very good. Any questions on that? I'll call for a motion.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, very good. Item F is the first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of City Iowa, two thousand nineteen by replacing chapter forty eight, article two, division two, section forty eight through fifty six, establishing new rates to be charged for electrical energy sold by the city of Webster City, Iowa. Dody?
Okay. So during our budget workshop, we had talked about the need for additional revenue of about three, three fifty five there fifty five thousand, five hundred dollars. So we went to a product going three percent increase on electric rates. And we went across the board on both the on both the base rate and the energy side. So we contacted Blair Meister, who's been working with the city for several years now on just the electric utility in general and our rates and asked that he provide us with with what that would look like. So I have attachments that were included that had shown what the, he was, he mainly focused on commercial and residential on what the, on what three percent will look like on both sides. So a little background, our electric rate ordinance that we have right now was passed adopted on July third of twenty seventeen. At that time, the base and energy rates were both increased by six point two five percent. Since then, the base rates have not changed for electric. So so since twenty seventeen, your base has been has been the base. Now that ordinance does does call for a one percent increase each year on the energy side, which we do every August first. That began with August, that that initial increase was on July third of twenty seventeen. Then August one of twenty nineteen is when we saw that initial one percent on the energy side. And then on the it also is on the power supply base demand, which is industrial. And then on this ordinance shows if those are, so those are the rates. This is from D G R showing the different rates.
Those are the existing rates that Zach has pulled up, I believe.
Next one, and then the dollars that that would generate, which at the bottom is it's three hundred and seventy thousand, seven sixty one.
Which is which we were budgeting three fifty five. So right in the ballpark, but we need there was some discussion during the council work sessions, I believe, Council Welch requested avoiding impacting the base rates. Blair did make adjustments to both the base rates and the energy charges. If you would like us to come back with a similar amount of rate increase, leaving the base rates as relatively flat as possible, we can do that. As Dody did mention, the last base rate increase was in twenty sixteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. And so it's been of some time since those rates were adjusted. We do want to be mindful of the energy rate. Just we are in the ballpark right in the pack of what municipals and other even private suppliers would be. There are some private suppliers that are lower. However, this keeps, you know, you need to be mindful when you're working with both a base rate and that energy charge on your competitive edge with other electric providers of which we are competitive right now.
I appreciate that. Being conscious conscious of the base rate, because again, that's the base rate is not controllable by the consumer. And that's what I always want to be empathetic to is that those folks that want to control their energy bill while we're raising rates, they can make choices when it's all tied to the the kilowatt hour rate, where they can't make energy efficient choices to try to cut their bill down if we lock them into that base rate hike. I do think this is a very modest base rate height, base rate height, and it hasn't been raised in, you know, eight years. You know, so I, I do feel it's okay absorbing some of that in, but you know, as as we go out and as this is a trend, we're going to see kind of staying ahead of the the cost of power and then the the market we bring it to and the cost to maintain it. I just want to be conscious of that base rate staying as low as possible and the actual consumable product being where the charge is. So I'm okay with what it's written here and I greatly appreciate you taking those words into consideration. But I am comfortable with.
Okay. All right, make it.
Thank you.
And just for the public, you know, we did receive a two point three percent increase on on the purchase power. So that's a lot of where this three percent is coming from. And this new ordinance does have have just the one percent like like the current ordinance, one percent energy side only yearly. So this is a one time asking for this this three percent.
And and again, to go back to kind of like the solar thing, I see electric bills all over the world. And our rate is not.
Oh, good.
It is not outlined, even if this but this raise. You know, even in the state of Iowa, you know, we 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 fall in the kind of that sweet spot where, you know, I talk more people out of solar than into it because of their their cost of power. So and in our in our bubble of Webster City, yes, our energy is getting more expensive, but on a global level, we are still relatively extremely affordable when it comes to energy and and the electricity field anyway. And so, yeah, I, I still think we're very competitive, especially compared to like the mid Americans and the you know, alliance of the world, so in Iowa. So anyway, I say all that just to, I guess, give everybody more of a relative look of the cost of power that we pay here in central Iowa compared to other places. Still not fun. They get an increase, but I mean, if I can soften that a little bit, yeah. With that, any other questions from council? I appreciate your work on this. Again, this is, like I said, minutes minute ago, it's not fun raising rates, but one thing I want to reiterate just to make sure it's it's captured by the community listening is we're passing on cost here in a sense. If this was a business and all of a sudden the widget you buy is you know, two point some percent more, you're going to have to charge at least that more. So this is a a transactional raise in a lot of senses. With that, I'll call for a motion.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Item G. This is a resolution supporting the submission of an Iowa Economic Development Authority, I E D A, application to the workforce housing tax credit program by H Q Homes LLC. Ariel.
Good evening. So this item and the item following are both resolutions supporting developers' applications to Iowa Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program. The first one is for H Q Homes for a thirty three unit workforce housing project. And then the following items for Quirk Investments for a forty unit senior living zero entry development. Both of these projects help meet key housing needs in Webster City and align with our goals for residents and people. The tax credit program makes these developments more financially viable by offering these state incentives and encouraging private investment with minimal local cost.
Just to further discuss, that's the development being pursued by Dean Cork. We recently replanted some lots out in the area near the hospital and the the two apartment buildings. He is proceeding with or or attempting to proceed with some of that construction, hence the request for the thirty three residential housing units. And then he has put forward an idea to possibly consider creation of a single story, zero entry senior living center. I believe these will likely be subject to grant awards. So I think he's trying to see what he can maybe provide for the community before proceeding and is requesting that we we support that.
An assisted living, do you?
We did not say that. However, it is the same location where the assisted living was.
I didn't. I do not believe it is at this time. I know that he would like to continue to possibly offer that. It just has not worked out financially yet. So I believe that's why he's maybe shifted to these zero entry living centers, although I do believe he mentioned in some dialogue with us that there might be some nursing assistance there on the facility. So maybe that is, maybe it is assisted.
Yeah. That's great.
Is there any commitment from the city outside of a lot of of?
Not at this time. It would be in the sense of TIF. But at this time, I mean, it's the support of the application.
Yeah, so similar to the K. Yeah, so um, similar to the Keding proposal, when uh they had us adopt a resolution last meeting, our commitment to them was the. One point two million dollar economic grant uh for those um. Uh, for some infrastructure improvements as well as the four and a half million dollar TIF that we provided. Uh, likewise with Mr. Quirk, I do not believe this um includes any uh per-unit uh request in terms of a. Uh, check that would be cut from the city, rather it uh draws back on the two million dollar. Uh, TIF that was approved by this council several years ago and is part of the reimbursement.
Very good. Uh, call for a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, item H, this is a resolution supporting the submission of an Iowa Economic Development Authority, IEDA. Application to the workforce housing credit uh program by Kirk Investments LLC.
And this one was associated with the senior living.
Yes.
Second.
Wonderful. Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, item I. Um, which kind of rolls into item J, so I'll, I'll kind of just read them both, if that's okay, or maybe we go, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Item I is a resolution uh authorizing the city manager to execute amended amendment thirty-six A. Uh, uh, of the on-call street specialist agreement of the two thousand twenty-five chip seal project. And item J is considered option B to the same project. Authorizing the city, city manager to direct incorporation of industrial park road HMA paving improvements. This project will be a change order to the twenty twenty-six HMA rehabilitation project. So there's some couple of resolutions here, but we'll iron them out here with all the jobs.
Then I just put option B on there. I just said, okay.
Updated one, this one?
Yeah.
But, yeah.
John, would you help me set the table for this issue just a little bit? So we uh, we had an engineer's estimate for what the cost of our. HMA project would be this year. When the bids were received, we had savings of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I believe. We then came back to the council, I believe it was last meeting or the meeting before, we talked about options for chip sealing. We brought you back, those options, uh, is, are the, is the map of the roads that, that are under consideration here?
I don't think it's in there.
Okay.
Page uh eighty-four.
If that's alright.
Council packet, the list of increased chip seal, there, there we go.
Okay. So as uh John and Brandon and I discussed, how to maybe experiment with this application in the city, we selected. Um, one road that had been done several years ago, that would be Union Street. Or Walnut, uh, which was done before Walnut or Union.
Street was done about eight years ago.
And then Walnut Street.
If, if Walnut Street hasn't been touched in a while, so Walnut Street's older.
Okay, so oldest one is Walnut, sort of the middle one is Union, and then Water Street. Water Street was unique because it had a portion actually overlaid last year, and it had a portion that was overlaid maybe five years ago. Um, and so if there was an uh. Uh, interest by the council and experimenting on those applications, this provides it. There are also other uh roads like. Was it James? I think we considered long stretch, but I think that would exceed sort of our, our, our budget uh from the cost savings for the HMA bid. Um, we also did throw in uh just out of options for the council to consider. Uh, there's a currently a gravel road in the community. Uh, its name is.
Industrial.
Industrial Park Road. Uh, we also bid uh putting six inches of asphalt on that and having that paved. I believe the council may have talked about that from time to time uh in the past. I know that uh to buts, I believe Perrin. Um.
McKinley.
Is it?
Yeah, McKinley Candor's in the west and Ivan Harvdray.
And there will be a building project, we believe, uh sometime this year uh on that road as well. Uh, so it's just an option for you to consider, um, you know, uh, and that. Asphalt bid came in, uh, uh, what was the price, a hundred and eighteen?
Hundred and eighteen. That hundred ninety-seven was an older estimate where we had.
Yeah. And the, the amount for the chip seal uh ended up being.
Hundred forty-nine.
Hundred forty-nine. So.
Yeah.
Um, if. You know, if you want to work with the savings from the um bid, you know, those are sort of your options. We can also mix and match. If you'd like to do that with other roads. If you would like to uh pursue both, um, the amount above the a hundred and thirty thousand. Would simply be drawn from fund balance in the sales tax fund of which. I gotta bring. I need to bring. We have approximately uh two point eight million. Or eighty-one percent of expenditures is fund balance, and it's assumed to maintain between that and two point one million in the five-year forecast. It, by no means do you have to pursue both. If you, if you want to consider pursuing both, that's fine. I know that Council Hanson had mentioned an area of Walnut that you thought might need to have been. Uh, overlaid instead of chip sealed uh in some communication, so we're open to your feedback. Um, the chip seal was a recommended preservation tactic for some of these roads. As we try to catch up with the overlay, the chip seal will extend the life of those roads that received the application earlier. The asphalt's new, will be need to be maintained in the future, but it also takes a gravel road from that to an asphalt road.
What are we thinking?
I think the only, the only area that I kind of called out was the, was it two blocks of Water Street that was done just a year ago? Or is it one block? I don't even remember now. And I've been, in fairness to everyone, I live on one of those blocks. And I, I have no problem with the chip seal, I just question. A year later, if it's really necessary, if we could do that on another street that maybe needs it worse. That's the only thing that I question about that option. So if there's clear, clearly um reasons that. That would need to be done, or, or that's proven to be a preservation technique that new after it was asphalted, that'd be. I'd like to hear that, otherwise I think you'd be looking at better options.
It is proven, uh, state of Minnesota DOT has done some studies where uh applying that chip seal within. Few years of the initial HMA paving extends the life.
Yeah.
So.
So I have.
But again, Counselor McKinley, uh, McKinney, if you would like that to not be done after. Waiting for a road so long and the residents on there would be happier, I'm happy to.
Personally, I really have no preference.
Okay.
I mean, I, I wouldn't, sure, I like to smooth the road. I'm not going to use that as an excuse in my position to say, don't do that block. Um, I just questioned whether a year-old road needed it or not. Um, I, I guess I'd support either option A or B. I don't, I don't have a strong preference, but. If there's possible business, we could be look, you know, looking at that area and, and option B is, do they need a paved road?
That's a good question. Um.
The industrial park road?
We have not uh inquired specifically about their need to a paved road. I know it's been mentioned before, but.
Where is it at?
Out there, back behind the little bowling alley, back where, where Hawkins and.
I know. I guess I realize that was gravel, but I do know, maybe you say that, yeah.
Otherwise, I have no. Preference either way.
Yeah, I, I don't. I'm kind of indifferent too on it. I mean, I don't. Neither, uh, we're trying to do as much as we can and then ex- extend the dog, expand the dollar and, and hit as much as we can and. Like try to get ahead of the, the infamous infrastructure beast, you know, and, and. So I, I mean, I know you guys spent a lot of time on it and, and, and looked at a bunch of different options, but. What do you think financially is the best position for us to take?
I did. I'll offer my thoughts after you offer yours. I, I think we, we've gone roundabout this as well, but.
Yeah, the industrial park road. There's eight hundred and. Or nine hundred vehicles per day on it.
Well.
And. I didn't do the traffic counts, people, but you know, DOT traffic count and. Part of me wonders if they took that traffic count when you're out there doing Second Street or. So people are maybe taking a detour back, because I was surprised by that number of vehicles, um.
One time, I think I. She's like, I don't think I've ever driven on it. I said, I think maybe more time, that's why I forgot about it.
There's some history, local history here. In the early nineties, that road was going to be paved. At the same time, the Portland cement was extended to white transfer. Because at that time, there was a truck that shuttled between the laundry plant and white transfer. A dozen times a day with finished goods. The cost was such that council decided not to pursue this part of it. At the same time, but then I would remind people, if you've been around long enough. That was our only industrial development property on the books. And it looked like we were going to have growth there. Um. If growth is possible, again, that's an interesting idea. But that's the history of it. It, it was proposed and never built.
Was that when the Kenko building was erected?
Kenko came later than that.
Okay, because that alleviated that issue, and they just went underneath the road.
Well.
And then.
White was charging two dollars a machine to move. Across Des Moines Street to the warehouse. And that's when Electrolux Corporate said, you're going to build a subway with a conveyor belt. And we'll recoup that money in about a year.
Yeah.
And that's when the Kenko warehouse was taken over by Kenko, which you may know is owned by Electrolux. And they lost money to themselves effectively.
Yeah. No, interesting. I feel like there's going to be a test on this history. Bob, this is interesting stuff.
It's interesting stuff, and, and there was a lot of excitement in the industrial park on further development and. I don't know, it just didn't develop or not yet.
Yeah.
So my perspective on the question that I think, I don't know if Counselor Welch or Counselor McKinney asked was, um. You, you can make a decision on the industrial park road anytime, right? We can always do that. Um, and that's not to minimize its importance or the significance of the businesses that are on that, but I mean, that is, even if you decide to do that. Before August, we would be able to add that on to the uh bid when they come into town to do the work. Um. In regards to the chip seal, we, we, we do need to implement some type of sealing program. Into our overall street maintenance program. Um, and there just happened to be bid savings this year that allowed us to experiment with that. I think when we look at the street department overall, um, there are, you know, John and I and Brandon have discussed in depth. You know, is it about time we, we consider purchasing a crack sealing machine? When we're spending thirty-eight to fifty thousand dollars to do that crack seal work each year? Um, do we need to uh begin doing more full-depth patches in-house with cold mix than we are currently doing? Um, and, and raising the, the pavement rating and just elevating uh the prowess of our. Very capable street department. Um, you know, in time, if this, if this uh application is seen as acceptable to the community. Uh, you know, it's very reasonable to see. The city doing its own chip seal rather than contracting it out and, and having the equipment to do it. Now that, it's not tomorrow. But it's an easy application. It involves throwing tar down and rock and rolling it in, doing the patching before. So from my perspective, the sealing and, and experimenting with that. Uh, to see if it's a fit here. And extending the life of the pavement, which we know is, is probably the top priority with the budget savings from the bid. But that is one man's opinion, so. It's fair, John. So, so, yeah.
I would lean towards option A. I think we've talked a lot about maintaining the roads and we just have never. Put the step to it, do it.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
And would you like us to get a bid for those blocks of Walnut with the asphalt? Not a bid, but a price?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, very good. So this is, if, if we move forward.
Broadway.
If we move forward with agenda item A and vote on J, do we still?
Yep. We, uh, so if you just uh move forward with uh I, option A, we really uh will just move beyond. This item J and hold that.
Don't even vote it.
No, you don't need to consider it.
Okay, sounds good. Well, I will seek a motion to approve for option A.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Very good, and we're gonna just jump over J?
Yeah.
Okay, is that the technical word?
Yes, I believe so.
Only thing to kind of back up, I'd recommend those two blocks that were done last year, maybe some communication with the residents of. The benefit to it. I heard it here, and I live on that block, but. You're going to have people that are calling and asking, why are we doing this when we just did the road a year ago?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Well, maybe we just hold off, John, you know, it could be that as well. We can talk about that on Wednesday, you know? And maybe with the Walnut, uh, the, the Walnut addition, we can balance that out.
But I do think that having only two blocks that we try out, I mean.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I just think.
It's sort of an achievement to see if that's something that we.
If it's beneficial.
It's beneficial.
Yeah.
And, and we'll know if those two blocks actually do outlast maybe other ones done. Is there, so you'll, you'll have kind of like, almost like test plots, you know, like different.
Just the communication with the residents of the industry and why.
Definitely.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item K. This is the appointment of three members to the zoning board of adjustment. So thi- this is kind of unique because it's, they're kind of overlapping or weird different uh terms. But uh, these are actually the appointment, um, of zoning board of adjustment of Lynn J. Cox for a five-year term, ending in twenty thirty. Uh, Shelby Caruna for the unexpired term ending in twenty twenty-seven. And I recommend to the handle the county board of supervisors, the appointment of Steve Strukin for the unexpired term ending in twenty twenty-eight. That's kind of what's all going on, but I'll let you speak more to that.
Yes, so um, this board actually has not met since twenty twenty-one. This board meets on a as-needed basis when um. A property owner is requesting a variance due to a hardship on their property. Um, I actually do have two different variance applications currently. Um, due to lack of communication from um a couple board members and then also just a. Already vacant position. I'm looking to have the appointments of these three individuals so that we can successfully have a meeting and. Um, have a meeting that would have a quorum there. So that's why I'm seeking this appointment at this time.
These recommendations you'll be familiar with are all serving on the planning commission at this time. Um, we did reach out to them and discuss that. For some reason, that's concerning to the council and like to go through the formal application, formal application process. We can do that uh or just uh appointment process, but um we have a matter that has come before the board. Um, that is already somewhat delayed. And we, we need to begin moving along, along with it. I, I do believe there potentially could be. Um, a positive result with having planning commissions also serve on the BZA, given that they deal with. Uh, uh, similar issues, open to. Um, counter ideas on that, uh, but we do have an applicant waiting up in Naden's just addition who has been. Waiting and is getting frustrated, and we're trying to move the process along for him.
It's got concerns.
Okay. Well, uh, I'll seek a motion for those two appointments and recog- and one recommendation.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Item I. Uh, this is a discussion on the Ag Academy permit fees. Um, leave uh.
Well, hold on, I'll get you up there in a little bit, so.
Ariel?
Can I, I think she's looking at me. Um, just to set the table here, uh, Maron Council. Uh, we have received a request from the Ag Academy for consideration of either full or partial waiving of the building permit fees. Um, they can discuss with you in terms of the costs as well as Ariel can confirm. I just wanted Ariel to answer one question for the council as they embark upon this. We also have major uh other nonprofit projects going on in town, similar to uh Webster City Lift. The Hero Board with the movie theater and others. Did they or did they not pay building permit fees?
They did.
Okay, and do you have any uh idea of the amounts of those fees? To date?
Right.
Okay.
The top of my head, but I can definitely get that.
Okay.
But no.
Alright, I just wanted to confirm that, and then. Counselor Welch, if you think you can invite the.
Bill?
Yeah.
No, wait, I do have one. I can account to. No, wait, I do have one. I can account to lift, um, with the Elks Building. I know one of theirs was upwards of five thousand dollars, but I can't remember.
I picked out the elevator. I was thinking about that. You can ask earlier and I got afraid to run. I was thinking the elevator was.
Was way.
Fiveish.
Uh, you know, and to round out the discussion, uh, the city was through different means, a contributor to both, uh, the Elks Building project and the hero. We have not to this date contributed anything to the Ag Academy. So just, uh, start the full picture here. So.
But it, it sounds like we have a couple of representatives from the Ag Academy. Uh, would you like to come speak? Awesome.
Thank you. Uh, those that don't know me, I know most of them or some of them were, or council, uh, Gene Gorley. So I'm president of the Career Ag Academy here in Webster City and it's still, oh, you guys president of the academy and actually Zach Cheese because our legal counsel on that. So.
Phil's got my name involved in, right?
Phil's got some handouts. We'll show you. If you haven't had the opportunity, just some quick background on the Career Ag Academy. Uh, this was a, a plan that was established from some, actually started at the FFA, uh.
Thanks.
Ag program, uh, several ag business leaders served on a committee there on helping Kurt Veldhuis and then the, uh, and still the, uh, current ag instructor to talk about things and challenges he has in his program. He has area businesses, ag businesses to work with him to understand what his challenges are, what his program is. And then, uh, we as a, a group on that ag advisory board, we're supposed to try to help him understand things or, or make sure his kids or students are being taught the things that the ag industry needs. And so one question we threw back to him was what, what, what was his biggest challenge that he has? And he says more and more, even though we're farming communities, that more and more of my students are urban, uh, based kids that just don't have the on farm or hands-on experience. And so for him, as he goes to teach things, uh, in animal handling and animal care, it all has to be on a video board. It's in today's biosecurity world where we just can't have, we used to be able to try and bring kids out to the farm and to do that today is quite the challenge. And so uh, with that, um, he said, uh, having some hands-on experiences would be great. And so we asked if there was a, uh, example one and, and we actually found one of his students that had been, uh, not his students, but, uh, Iowa State student had come up and done some student teaching with him, actually went to Muscatine and that school actually had an ag learning center. It was developed external to the school, actually from farmer and an ag, uh, instructor at the time talked about it. And they actually started a separate, uh, program and then they leased that facility to the school. And so with that concept, several of us went down and toured that facility, visited with instructors. Um, that was our superintendent at the time and that was principal, uh, Kurt Veldhuis and, and, uh, from the, uh, school board president at the time. We all went down, toured that. On the way home, it was basically what we do in some Webster City. It, it, they went from a program that was almost failing in Muscatine that they're going to shut it down with twenty five students. Today they have over five hundred and fifty students going through this ag program there. They had a, a retiring, uh, ag instructor when they were going to cancel the program. Today they have three and a half full-time instructors there. So the idea was how do we replicate that in Webster City? And so, um, if you haven't been out to the fairgrounds, we have a relationship with them. Mainly it's ag zoned out there. So we're able to have livestock on a year-round basis without, um, too many there. And we're also going to have this facility ventilated properly. But, um, if you haven't been out there, the picture that's on the diagram you have, it looks exactly like that right now. The shell is up, um, the, uh, inside walls are being worked on as, as we speak. And so, um, the, it was where the floral building used to be. When you drive through the arches, if you've been to the fairgrounds, you saw the floral building was the building straight in front of you. That is now gone and replaced with this facility right now. So if you get a chance, take a tour out there, drive out and just take a look at it. You can kind of drive through and see them uh, working on it. But we do have the facility under construction now. So and with that, I'd like to say thank you to the city and, uh, John and, and crew there. The city helped us to expedite the permitting process and helped us get some things going that we just, uh, our builder is from Jewel. It's Ag Force. He was not familiar, never built anything in Webster City. So he was kind of new. We had some engineering going on and we just didn't always have our ducks in a row because we didn't know some of the process and, and just appreciate you all helping us guide us through that process and getting it expedited to help us get to where we are today. A little bit of a timeline, we're trying to have a grand opening, which would be, uh, right ahead of the fair. Uh, the fair wants to use the facility. Obviously their floral building's gone, so they want an area to have some of their stuff. So, uh, we have several subs that are going to be working over each other. So there'll be several electricians and uh, HVAC folks, uh, ventilation folks all be working at the same time to try and get the project completed. So with that, uh, on the project completed, so we raised, had a cap campaign or actually it started one for original facility. It'd been downsized. Um, we're still trying to raise money. So we've got the facility will essentially be built, but then we have equipment to install on that yet. Uh, we'll have an endowment we're trying to fill. So we're going to fundraise for that. That's basically for long-term maintenance. Uh, because this is owned by the Career Ag Academy owns the facility. Fairgrounds has leased us the ground underneath it for a, a ninety nine year lease for a dollar or whatever we have negotiated. And then the school, we have an agreement with them on a lease to actually, uh, utilize the facility, provide children or students there, uh, bus the kids there, uh, provide the instructors there and, uh, fund the utilities and the maintenance, some general maintenance on the, uh, use of the facilities or utilizing it. But long-term maintenance, some of those things will be on us. And so we're still in a capital campaign to, to raise that money. So every dollar counts for us and, and we're just trying to, we're trying to work for grants and several other things, but just appreciate your support and there's anything to do on every dollar, we're going to try and put into, to educating the kids and training them, uh, would it be appreciated? So and I don't know, did I miss anything? So, or, or.
I wasn't, I wasn't gonna add. You could comment was made about, um, lift and hero. Um, and I'd sit on that side of the bench, so I understand a little bit. People are coming to you for money all the time. So I get it. Um, this does have a kicker in that it adds the educational aspect of it. And, you know, um, in the world we live in, unfortunately, there's a lot of, um, single parent households and that. Uh, and kids sometimes have more time on their hands to get into problems and so on and so forth. So, uh, we think this will help build some accountability, some responsibility in young people. And, uh, they may not end up becoming a, a farmer. They might end up being a brain surgeon in New York City or a stockbroker in Los Angeles. What we wanted to do is learn about responsibility, accountability, teamwork. We want them to, to learn to work together and, um, make it a better world. And, uh, we're coming back to our issue at hand, uh, our contractor, um, was under the assumption, and I don't know, I wasn't in the meeting where this was talked about. Uh, John doesn't have a recollection of it and I don't either. And, um, but he's very amicable. Uh, Blake Barker is a very nice young man, very, uh, full of integrity. I have no doubt. But that's, that's what he thought it was going to be, was approximately twenty five hundred dollars. It's come out, it's fifty six seventy seven and change.
Yeah.
Fifty six twenty seven ten. So if there's anything to reiterate what Gene said earlier, we're extremely grateful for the city's cooperation and help us expedite the process because we were getting behind and it, we, it's really a failed opportunity for the contractor to catch up a lot, uh, and if any financial consideration would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No questions?
I think this is great. I think it's great too. I love this. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and, and I feel like waiving of the permit fees is probably the, the, the easiest thing we can do on the financial side. Um, you, you know, that for a couple of reasons. One, the cost isn't great relatively. And two, it's, it's essentially just absorbing some cost into our, you know, inspection department and stuff. So, um, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I wanted to discuss a little bit.
I'm just wondering, do we set a standard for that for other nonprofits? I'm sorry, lift and hero. I think it should have been waived for them too.
But I don't, did they actually request it though? Yes, they never requested.
No, but again, said city played a big role with lift on the catalyst and stuff. So it wasn't even, and our contractors. They kind of eat it and then go us back, you know, so it wasn't a thought versus like, I know you guys, like you said, you're scratching every cent to even get to this point.
But I, I, I see your saying those setting a precedent.
Like, I mean, I'm fine with setting the precedent. Do we need to have an ordinance or do we have just?
See, I would prefer just not having an ordinance for it and leaving it to our discretion because now we're not locking in future councils to, to follow or lead, you know? But I, and I think it leaves it to our discretion too, to be able to kind of weigh. Okay. Is this truly a benefit of the community and, and, and the, and I, what we, you know, foster the, the tax dollar or not? And it gives us a little more leeway, you know? So I, I would say we leave it to our discretion until it's something that might snowball into something we can't leave to our discretion with their ordinance.
That's not okay, John?
Yeah, I, yes.
Yeah. Shortest answer here.
So the agreement is to waive the entire.
Uh, the entire amount of fifty six hundred dollars. Is there any, uh, questions or comments, Mrs. Bertrand? Yeah. So.
Sounds good to me.
Do we need an official motion? Just consensus council does let you get.
Motion, probably.
A motion?
Yes.
We move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, item four is item, item sent to council and item A under that is the city attorney update. Zach, you got any words?
Favorite part of every council room. So real estate council, you guys familiar with the thirty two point eight acres that, uh, uh, city was working to acquire for the tree dump? That's all been finalized. Uh, have they put trees out there yet?
Well, there's, there's something going on out there. Yeah, I believe there's, there's probably some movement.
There's, the city staff asked for signage today. So our question on what should be on the signage? So I assumed it was moving forward. Uh, as you guys had tonight, you saw all the ordinance changes that you had relied on and then, um, just some easement language that we, or easements we put together for the paramount drive project. So.
Very good. All right, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.